Hello Commissioners, we meet here with the full body today seated to my right is Commissioner Sharon Bollos and seated to my left is Commissioner Gage Foror. This is a public meeting, not a public hearing, and so no public comments will be taken. But we're meeting today on this, the Monday, the fifth of February two thousand twenty-four. First item on our agenda is a discussion and or action for approval of the minutes for the Commission work session held on January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for those minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Now, if the next thing that we have on here is a motion, just a moment. We'll go back to the Zoom. The next thing that we have on. The next thing that we have Commissioners on our agenda is a is a closed session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property in North Ogden. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's a unanimous decision, all voting aye. We'll now go into closed session, thank you. We'll be back when we're finished. There was a. Thank you, we're gonna move to item number four because we had some administration and closed sessions, that's why the number's so high. This is the discussion regarding amendment to the two thousand twenty-three budget. We appreciate Commissioner Foror joining us remotely with his high school picture being represented. And then also. We'll have Scott Park and Stephanie Ebert here with us, and so. Mr. Park. You look as though you're still in high school as well, so.
I am getting older. My oldest son's about to turn twenty, so I am not feeling that young.
Wow. Do you remember how old your parents looked when you were at graduation, when they were in the audience?
I do, and they were very old when I was graduating. They were at least forty-three or forty-four. They were old.
Interesting role reversal.
It is, it is. Yes, and my parents have no sympathy for me when I tell them I'm feeling old because I have a twenty-year-old. I have no sympathy, so.
Okay, go ahead, Scott.
Commissioners, what we have here, these are all items that were approved in the two thousand twenty-three budget, but were not completed before the end of the two thousand twenty-three calendar year. So most of these, so we've had a hard time getting our fleet vehicles, so that's the biggest single item on here. And we ordered six hundred thousand dollars worth of vehicles, they are still trickling in, and so what we're hoping to do is, with your permission, is to roll over the money that was already appropriated in two thousand twenty-three, and move it to the two thousand twenty-four year so that we can pay for all these orders that we've made that just didn't come by the end of the year. So this is something that we do every year, it's not abnormal, the amount is lower than what it's been in the last two years, but still higher than what it historically has been. Usually we're rolling over a million and a half to two and a half million dollars. Covid really did a number on us, and we, our supply chain was just way messed up, so we were rolling over five and six million dollars. Now we're down to two or three point two, so we're coming back down to normal. We're still a bit higher than what we have been historically, but all of these projects, and I'm happy to go over any one of these if you'd like, all these projects were approved in the two thousand twenty-three budget, they just weren't completed. And so we're asking for permission to adjust the two thousand twenty-four budget to fund these items.
Most everything that I see on here, like the radios and some of those, they could be, are some of them just because they couldn't get to them? I would imagine there's maybe ten, twenty percent of them, they couldn't get to it, but the rest of them are because of supply problems, right?
Um, I'd say there's maybe a third of them were because the departments were holding off, things are costing more, and so they weren't placing their orders until later in the year. And so had we ordered it when we normally would have, we would have received it in time, but we were being cautious because everything's more expensive, so we said, okay, we don't need this right now. Let's wait until September, October to make sure that we're gonna get through the budget year. When we found out that'd be where we placed the order and things just haven't come, so that's that's a good share. So it's like half and half. Have we placed the order for in time? Supply chain issues are causing this issue, are the issue. The other ones are, we were conservative, we didn't want to overspend our budget, so we waited.
Thank you. Commissioner, go ahead.
What's the upper valley turnpocket improvements?
So there are three intersections where we're designing like the deceleration lane or left-hand turn lane. And so we have some money in our impact fees that we're funding a design of that. We had hoped that the design would be done and we could actually start construction on it. We haven't started construction yet, the design's still out, it was approved a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
This is the actual construction, though.
Yeah, which one are you referring to?
One of them would have been Old Post Road, or Old Snow Basin Road, probably.
Eight from the top. TGE. No, this is the actual bid, so this is the bid that we did at the end of the year to actually design them. So they're just going to turn in design drawings and bid documents, so this actually isn't the money to construct them, this one is just the design we're paying for right here.
Half a million dollars just for design?
Uh, the seven hundred and fifty, or the seventy-five thousand dollars.
No, I'm looking at five twenty-five, it's.
Five twenty-five, yes, oh sorry, yes, that is the construction.
Okay.
So the seventy-five with the TGE, that's the design, and then the five twenty-five is one. And you'll notice there doesn't have a vendor selected, we haven't even put it out to bid yet.
That's that forty-one hundred north. Just so you're driving, Gage, just so you know, that's the forty-one hundred north extension on that, where they go up and over the bridge and up further, so.
Yeah, there's three turnpockets on that road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions, Commissioner Bollos? Commissioner Foror, if you're able, any comments you have?
No, I think, and I understand the forty-one hundred north, I think that makes good sense, thanks.
Okay, I don't have any problems with this, I think you're okay, let's just roll it over.
Okay. All right, we will do that, we'll get it rolled over and you'll see it, we'll do an adjustment for the first quarter budget here in a couple of weeks. I guess there's not many more commission meetings in in February, right, so we'll do it in March.
We have just, we're just gonna not do one, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, next week.
Okay, oh, and it's a holiday, so that's why you canceled the other work session. That makes sense, okay. Yeah, so you'll sit here in a couple of weeks, it'll just be a public hearing to make these adjustments to the actual budget, but I wanted to run it by you first before we put it on a public hearing, and.
Great. Move forward, that's great, thank you. instead of saunter, so we're doing what we can now, just letting you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Christie, I don't know if they're ready, do you have anything else to discuss, Miss Ebert, Mr. Park?
Good, just, I'll be listening.
Uh, no, nothing.
Thank you. I'm wondering if we could move forward with item number five or six, Christie, if they can. Right, we're gonna move forward with item number six on our agenda regarding utility easement under the rail trail. We've got Sean Wilkinson in Portland. Erickson here, Gary Myers is excused. We'll go ahead and start with you, Mr. Wilkinson, go ahead.
Thank you. So Commissioners, I've given you a layout of a utility easement that's being requested. And there's a part of this utility easement that crosses county property. So the property, the development is all in Plain City and most of the utility easement areas, well, all of it is in Plain City. But Weaver County owns a piece of the rail trail, which is parcel number nineteen twenty-seven twenty. And there's a small piece of this utility easement that crosses that parcel. So we have an applicant, or a developer, I guess, in Plain City who is requesting that the county grants a thirty-foot access and utility easement across county property, which is the rail trail in this case. So I've discussed this with Gary. He wants to treat this, if the commission allows us to proceed, he wants to treat this like an excavation permit where we would allow the easement to take place, we would allow the work to happen, and then we would make sure that it's put back better than it was, and that we don't have any issues with the surface so that the rail trail functions the way that it should. Uh, we, we don't see any issues doing this. It makes sense, and we would require the developer to give us the easement language so that we can review that, and then we have our attorneys look at that and make sure that it protects the county and.
My only thing, I'm, I, I'm gonna speak out of turn here, I don't think I have a problem with this, so long as we get like twenty-four months. So if there's a sinkhole somewhere or something else that the.
After the restoration?
Yeah, after the restoration, something like that, but I don't have an easement, I you know, I don't have an issue, Commissioner.
I don't have an issue either.
Commissioner Foror, you're the guru as it relates to uh, real estate, if you're able to talk, I'd love to have your comment on that.
No, I, this is just the rail trail, isn't it, Sean, no?
It is. No.
Okay, yeah, I, I think that's fine, I agree with with Chair Harvey that let's just make sure that we have the excavation permit and you know, some type of, you know, twelve, twenty-four month guarantee, I, I don't. Do you know, is it, do you know what utilities, is it for gas, electricity, is it just one utility or all?
It looks like it's sewer.
Sewer, okay.
Is this lane upgraded, so if others wanna hook onto it in the future, they don't have to dig it up and resize it?
That I don't know. I realize there's a ton already on here, so this is just thirty feet of that what appears to be thousands of feet.
Well, and it, and the easement, I believe, would be thirty feet wide.
Is that, it's just the part in yellow, correct?
Uh, it's the part in red, sorry.
Oh, I'm just sorry, is that, yes.
Just the part in red, not yellow, yeah.
That's.
That's not mine.
So, I've, I've got just a comment, the excavation permit ordinance itself does provide for a three-year guarantee and a bond. So that is the default under our county code already.
Happy day.
Go with that.
Yep.
So that would be if they issued an excavation permit, and another comment, I probably should have talked to one of you earlier to get a feel for this before I kinda walked into this blind, but um, the parcel that the county owns here, or the parcels on the rail trail, are they dedicated as part of a plat or anything, or do they exist just as parcels with meets and bounds descriptions?
That is my understanding, it's just meets and bounds descriptions.
Okay. I wondered if, I, I, I'm sorry, this is a request for an easement to be given to a private entity for utility purposes, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, would there be any benefit instead of doing it this way? And I haven't really thought through this fully, but for the county potentially to maybe create a public utility easement there that wouldn't be given to any particular entity, but it would be able to be used by all public utilities, is there, is this just gonna be a purely private utility? I mean, how's that gonna work?
That's a good question. My understanding is it's for sewer, but I don't know if it's only for one development, or if Plain City is taking the sewer line. That's, I don't know that.
And if there's a potential for other utilities to want to locate. We're, we're to, on our agenda, we're joined by, uh. Representative from the sheriff's office. Mark Horton and Kylie Slater, we'll let them proceed as we await the arrival of our sheriff, go ahead, gentlemen.
Hey, um, the state's been working on upgrading our statewide radio system. Uh, this project should have been done two years ago. And it's, every time we turn around, there's more to ways, more to ways, more to ways.
Maybe they should take the lean, uh, system class.
They should take a lot of things, i- it's getting to the point where it's getting a little bit of frustrating, frustration for us. But part of this system is, we made the initial purchase four years ago. One point five million dollars for new radios for the sheriff's office. That didn't include all the bells and whistles, we're having to upgrade to digital now, that's, that, this will be an upgrade to the radios. Another thing that we are looking at countywide, uh, is going encrypted. Uh, so everybody out in scanner land can't listen, we've had some incidents where we can tell people listen. Uh, we had one Saturday where we think people were listening to what was going on. Um, the, the radio upgrade for the quote from Motorola, uh, come in at fifty five hundred and forty one thousand dollars. Right around there.
Do you have money in your budget to be able to handle that?
Nope, five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, I tried to budget for this two years ago. And when they said it was gonna happen, then last year, and talking to. Uh, the sheriff and the commissioners, they said they knew it was coming and that they were prepared for it, that's kinda where we're at. Yeah.
Okay.
Some of the frustrations with this is, i- i- it's gonna do three things for us. Uh, all the radios will be updated to the latest software, all be converted to digital, and we'll all be going encrypted.
Okay, great.
This is, this is five hundred and twelve radios, so it's not a small amount of radios. Um, the sheriff's office is different than some of the other agencies in the county. Um, all of our patrol deputies have two radios, they have a handheld radio on their belt, then they have a truck radio. Some of the cities along the west that front can get away with, with not having the truck radio. We cannot, the reason being is the handheld radio transmits on five watts. The truck radio transmits on forty five watts, so we would get up in the valley, we'd get up even north of Snowcrest. And we can't get out on the handhelds, and so we have to have the truck mount, mounted radios, and so every, every sheriff's office vehicle. Patrol wise has.
Likely not practical to just only communication, you have to have a handheld, otherwise you gotta come back to your truck. And that's a safety issue too, likely, right?
And, and they're streamlining, UCA is doing some good work for us, they are streamlining, uh, I have a contract coming up. In front of the commissioner probably next week, in front of you guys, uh, we have a site up above Wolf Creek called the Liberty Site. Uh, county took that over about four years ago, UCA, we have a repeater in there.
I do what you're talking about.
Yeah, UCA has offered to come in and trunk that into the main system. Since it was a sheriff's office repeater, only sheriff's office had access to it, if they trunk that into the main system. Fire will now have access to that repeater, public works blocks have, uh. Access to the repeater, that gives us our coverage north of Snowcrest.
So, okay, that sounds pretty good. Uh, Commissioner Bollos, this is in your portfolio, any questions or comments?
No.
Commissioner, Commissioner Flor?
None for me, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, okay, you might want, this is just basically a heads up then for us, what's coming in the next budget.
Well, and like I said, it was supposed to be done two years ago, and now in true Motorola fashion, they, they want the money now. And so.
We, we started this two years ago, we kept telling you it's supposed to be next quarter. Next quarter, and we never budgeted because we renewed at Motorola. They start at the bottom of the state and they're moving their way up.
It's never been budgeted and rolled over.
No.
It, it never was budgeted and rolled over?
We, we told you it was coming, but we, we were told by Motorola. It'd be in a few months, and we would say, okay, it's coming, but we're not sure, so let's hold off, so it was kinda set aside. And then now they're, they're getting closer and closer, now it's like, okay, it's finalized, this is gonna happen. What's Park's involvement in this, do you remember during the budget or process, I mean, on this, what we've talked about?
Hartschel Road.
Scott Park, I don't know. Scott would know about this, yes. I'd like him to have a little, just, he, he maybe has something. And they have a line item or something rathole out there to do that.
Well, when we do this, we're probably gonna have to ask for an open P O, I mean, it's a pretty good number of what they give us. I'm sure there's gonna be a little bit of flex in there either way, when you're talking about over five hundred radios that have to be programmed.
Sure, is this a single source or does it have to go through Jalen Horn?
No, it's single source, it has to go through Motorola, it's their radios they're upgrading.
Okay, all right, great.
So when this come out, L, Motorola used to run the system, the UCA system, L three Harris got the contract this time. And so we had the option to get an L three Harris radio, which would, we would have to basically scrap everything, we'd be looking at over two million dollars. If we went that route, this way we're at five hundred thousand to upgrade our existing equipment, and our existing equipment is great. We have no problem with it, it's fairly new, and so this is the route we, we choo, we chose to go is to stay with Motorola.
I vaguely remember some of the discussions in our budget hearings regarding this, but I don't remember what we did or appropriated. Uh, there, or how that was.
I don't know that we did appropriate it.
I don't remember.
It's not.
Okay, what else do you have for us, Mr. Slater, do you have something for us today, or you just here for the?
I was here for the, any technical questions on the radio stuff.
So, great.
No, that's all we have right now.
Okay, Sheriff.
I got pictures for you.
Here's a copy for you guys on that.
Just that guy in the lower left corner.
It looks like a high school picture, doesn't it?
Hey, Easy, that wasn't high school, that was, you know, a while back, but not that far back.
You looked forty.
I had to be at least fifty six then, I don't know.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
These are the newest renditions of. Gage, the sheriff has handed us, uh, pictures of the renditions of maybe a possible expansion, just so you can. See in your mind what's going on.
Yeah, interested in seeing those, yeah, that's great.
Can we get a copy of these, can we make a copy?
I will send them to you digitally when I get them, I just wanted to have.
Are you gonna tell us about them?
Yeah, I, uh, yeah, so that is, so those are the two pods, golf and fox. So that is going, uh, south and east with the men, this is just medical.
This takes a gauge out to that area where we were originally gonna put the big line of storage sheds out that way.
I got it, yeah, makes sense, expanding the two areas.
Yeah, well, expanding.
Seventeenth Street.
Towards seventeenth street.
Towards seventeen, right, got it.
And then if you flip the page. That's just a different version of that, and then you can see the shadows of future pods, however. Uh, what this doesn't show you is it almost gives us no room to put. Pods in because it encroaches on that, uh, Quest facility or whatever that. Facility is.
On this side?
Uh, yeah, more towards the other way, yeah, you can't see it, but yeah, it restricts us. This is similar to, uh, the original plan, but it's a much smaller version. It only gives us about thirty beds rather than the forty eight we need. Um, and it relocates an administrative bu- building out front, which we felt like we should not go to. Um, just our thoughts where the public spoke with a not building of administrative facility with a. Um, work release center into it. Plus that one would take us three and a half years because we'd have to relocate and then they would gut the inside.
And turn that in.
Yeah, where the first two would, uh, could be done in probably, uh, sixteen months, and it would not interrupt anything. As far as business.
But is this one, are these ones more expensive because you're actually building a hard facility and this one already exists?
So the first two are the cheapest, around thirty five million. That one is, uh, that one is. That one is completely relocating. That one is relocating the, um. Booking and release.
Oh, here's your new Sally or your.
Yes, Mark would love that one, cuz it would interrupt temporarily the flow of his, uh. Warehouse.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yes, he likes that. But that would accomplish a little bit of renovation of Alpha Pod. And that one is reconfiguring, that one's, those are not even on the table really, those are just renditions. And that would be basically what we planned minus, uh, that would be the. Admin facility, two floor out front, kinda by the poo grinder, and then that would be our original design out front with. The medical mental health wing, getting everything, that one's probably around fifty something maybe.
This one's not going all the way out to.
No, that one's just right out front.
Is the footprint smaller?
Uh, no, that's the, that would be the preferred, but we're still fifty-ish million dollars. Fifty five.
And none of these include having community partners in the facility.
Okay, so. That's just, those are just rough. If we could get the girls to even make hard copies of these.
Yes.
So Commissioner Flor would be able to take a look at it, that'd be great, and you electronic over when you're ready.
Um, you attach the price tag to each one?
I'll give you these tomorrow when you come over, I'll do that. Cuz some of them, we're not even getting any, even look at them.
The ones that are off the table, we don't want. But I saw you had a spreadsheet on the back, but can you attach the price tag to?
Yes, yeah, that's what we do, I just wanted, I promised I'd have it to you for today. That's it, that's all I have.
Wow.
Easy peasy.
Again. Kylie, you've been pretty outspoken today.
Yeah.
Nope, I'm here. We get to move forward with the radio stuff.
I wanna, I, in theory, yes, but I wanted to find out what Scott Park just did, I wanna make sure. That's, that's a huge.
Yeah. You'll have to be the one to find the money.
Yeah, so.
Well, very good state, so far UCA's ninety million. What looks like it on their part?
I don't know.
Well, that's, any type of match from the state, can I lend help with that?
Yeah, right.
Do we tell them about the roads, that where you're fighting on that?
The roads department? Uh, I'll do it later.
Okay, the, uh. Tomorrow, so the initial, when they switched the core over to the L three Harris, there was, if we were to buy new radios. There was a fifteen percent match that the legislature had given, but that still equates to.
Okay.
That was still in the one point nine million dollar price tag for us.
Well, cuz they based it on classification of counties.
Sure.
So there was an option to buy new radios with the new vendor, but where we'd already spent the previous money. To acquire all the Motorola stuff, this just brings, this costs now is just bringing that up to where. They would be utilized on the new system.
Do you feel like this will be the most effective way to go?
Yeah, yeah, candidly, I thought it was a ruse to make us buy Harris radios. And honestly, would have cost us millions. And there's a lot of other chiefs, uh, across, felt the same way, and like we had to get rid of all of our Motorola's, but, uh. We felt, our, our Motorola's are great radios.
They, they do make a good radio, some of their other stuff I questioned, uh, we had, we didn't have very good luck with their dash cam system, but. They do make a radio.
And their core business has been for years.
Well, and we're, we've heard some stories about the L three Harris that, um, not good. Uh, sheriff's office down in Florida reporting, they get in a fight and the battery goes flying off. And half the time it works and half the time it don't.
King Bendix?
You're not around anymore. But. It, it's, it's, it's starting, for me, it's starting to get frustrating because it's supposed to go to, it was supposed to happen last year. It was supposed to happen here before that. Um, if Motorola would have got the original contract, this would have been done two years ago. No doubt. Um.
I just remember we put a grunt load of money in this for the last several years. This was a lot out of our budget.
Well, it gets frustrating even our Motorola salesman. It's like, the state wanted this. Why do the agents have to pay?
Yeah.
It's, it's frustrating.
Another thing for the state where they make the.
Yep, yeah. And so it's getting frustrating. I, I see more delays coming, to be honest.
More.
More delays.
More delays coming.
They, they were supposed to flip the switch on this December thirty-first, and now it's been pushed out August again.
So they're starting in the southern end of the state, working their way up. So I think they told us. Our date was the end of August. Beginning of, end of, first part of October.
I'm gonna be sick that month.
So, but.
Yeah.
The problem now, commissioners, is that. We have to have these upgrades to the radios before they flip the switch. Once they flip the switch, the radio doesn't work.
So that's the upgrades not done. The radio doesn't work.
And that's where, like, going back on the two-year project, it's like, oh, we'll just keep rolling it over until we get closer. Now they've come out and said. Well, we need to do this now. We're gonna do a SOP program, I mean, in April. So you need to have this stuff done in April. And it's like. Two months away. So, but yeah, I don't. U C A had some changes with their leadership and some growing pains, so it's. But somebody.
He is a part of that, yeah. You know Tina.
She's now the director. But they may, I know she was an acting director. Now she is the official director.
Yeah.
So, but I think one of the things they oversaw was how are we going to get those that don't buy into the new L three Harris system? How are we gonna get them onto the system? And it requires the encryption and the, uh, digital, you know, upgrades to the radio. And so. Yeah, that was kind of a last minute through. And we were sitting in a meeting last week and. The stakeholders meeting, they didn't have any kind of discussions on that in November. Wow, so I was there at that.
That doesn't work for our way to run business. I don't know how it works for the other twenty-eight counties.
There's a lot of people that aren't happy right now.
Well, maybe we could, I don't know, Gage, you can rattle some other cages down there. That's not, it just doesn't seem right that this puts on counties like this.
Yeah, I'm rattling plenty of cages. Doesn't seem to be getting very far, but we'll keep rattling.
Okay, great.
Well, we sat there and then when that first come out about two years ago, they were gonna just, they were gonna throw County Road out. You had to be public safety or a state agency. Which we knew Doc could stay on it, but County Road was gonna be thrown out. And, yeah, sorry, Slater and I worked pretty hard with Arvon to change that. Because if County Roads gets up above Causey and Evergreen, they have no communication. If one of their plow trucks gets stuck up there, they're done. And so, uh, I think a lot of people complained about that, so we were able to keep County Roads on. Uh, which was huge for us. And so there's been a lot of work and Tina's listening. But, I agree.
She was instrumental in the Liberty changes. So when we talk about trunking it in, right now. Essentially, your radios work like a cell phone, right? It's a computer on a belt.
And I remember we did quite a bit of work on getting that, that was all that TV. That's your TV towers up there, Gage, and that, all that, that's that same area you're talking about.
Exact same.
Transmitter area or the translator, you know?
Yeah, we're getting, we know where that is. So right now, the user has to turn the, on the radio, which is patched in. And, uh. So we have an answer to it, but the fire district doesn't, uh, County Roads doesn't have access to that. It's just the sheriff's office. And so by trunking that in, basically, the radio will automatically talk to that side. So.
That's great. It's.
That'll be. Big, big upgrades for us and helpful up there for that, for sure.
Perfect. Any other, any other things in your presentation this afternoon?
Okay.
Great. Thanks for all you do. Appreciate your help.
These guys, uh, did a fantastic job through this whole pro. I mean, how many times did you travel down to meet or, uh? Groups, uh, St. George, meetings for this. A lot of work to make sure we got our roads covered because they would have bound a different chow. We had spent a lot more money. To get the roads department to have communication with them.
Yeah, they originally.
Yep, you're, get your own radio system for them.
Yep.
Yeah, then we have to go put in the heaters entirely.
Yeah.
So we all, some of these other, at least four, unless it's just they're picking on three, four, or three, two and one. Classes, but these other little ones, they get in these washes and areas. That's.
Well, you get. You get Roy City that needs to put in their own public workshop. It's easy. They throw an antenna up on their public, on their city hall building and they're done, but we have to go over a mountain.
But. No, I get, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Class six county's got a hundred percent funding for the new radios.
Wow.
So. With the L three.
Is that right?
But nothing for.
They, they, they did. They saved us a lot of money. Seriously. So.
On this.
Class two counties were fifteen percent match is all. And then, uh.
Class one county get any?
I don't think so. So.
Okay, well, that's what it is. All right. Thank you for your keeping us updated today. That's, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to move on. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, we'd like to move on to our, our next discussion item. We are early and if, uh, Christie. The folks that are involved with this, uh, code resolution, um. If you could. Report, Gage, are you still able to hang with us just a little more?
Yeah, I probably got about another five, ten minutes. Just heading in right now, so.
This, this has to do with the revision of a county code, appointing a new ex, uh, chief administering officer over appeals. Uh, grandma type stuff.
Got it. I read that. Yeah, I'll, I'll hang in there. I should be.
While you can. When you drop, you drop, you know?
Yep, when they, when they come, become available, I'm running in, so we'll see how it goes. But, yeah, I'm fine.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, just to report back, Gage, they're on their way. Standby.
Great, thanks. I'll stand by.
We're gonna go ahead and, uh, wel- welcome you here today. We've got a discussion. Regarding revision to County Code two-two dash thirteen dash seven subsection A. A resolution appointing a new chief administrative officer of appeals. Uh, this is a grandma, the grandma request and, and Janie Avery.
Yep.
And then, uh, Lynn Taylor, uh, Brandon Quinney's not joined us yet. We do have Ricky Hatch and Craig, Greg Brandt. Janie, you're listed first, and so we're gonna hear you first, if that's okay.
First of all, so I, I told her, since this is her first go, I, I'm kinda.
Mister Lynn Taylor, go ahead.
So, um, I just wanna say thank you, uh, again, commission for approving. The dedicated records officer for the county.
Yeah.
That's been a huge, huge help. And it's done everything that we had hoped it would do. Getting it squared away on a lot of requirements and things that we didn't even realize we were supposed to be doing. So Janie's been doing a lot of that stuff. So the, the three things today is to give you a heads up of what's coming in commission meeting. Answer any questions. Um, of through, I just suggest, she's been working on these for a while, and I suggest to just get all three of them done at the same time.
Great.
And, uh, so that's what each of these three are. So this will really just kind of be an overview to let you know what's coming. And then to see which of these you wanna do as consent and which you wanna do as action items, uh, in commission meeting.
Very good. Go ahead.
Um, so the first one, um, is just updating county code section twenty-two dash thirteen dash seven. And then letter A. Um, we're just gonna be updating the word agency to county in a few spots, just to clear, make clarifications. Um, and then also specifying that when the chief administrative officer for grandma appeals denies a grandma request, that someone else can handle those appeals. And so.
The reason behind that one is sometimes the chief administration officer is, is the one that's, would normally respond to the initial grandma appeal. And so we were thinking if they respond and say. No, you can't have it. And then the person appeals, it would go back to.
To that person?
To that exact person. So we thought it'd be better to designate, if I'm saying this right.
Yeah.
It doesn't mention the designated. It's not just a.
So that's gonna be the next resolution. It just goes right in here, good. Um, so currently it's Roger Brunker, um, but this resolution is making it so that, um. Myself, Janie Avery will be the new chief administrative officer of appeals.
So it did, it ordinance talks about the position of the person, correct?
Correct.
Very good.
Yep. And then, yeah, so then that led to the resolution. And then the last thing is, um, per county code, we're supposed to do an annual report. Regarding grandma requests and then also, um, an update on how the county archives is going. And so this last page is just. A summary of the slides that we will be showing in commission meeting. Um, it goes over.
And, and we know that these are the long size too small, so you're not supposed to be. Get a whole lot of useful. This is just to give you an overview of what's coming.
Will you go through?
Yeah, so like the first one, so it starts. Over, um, the first couple of slides are just regarding the whole year of twenty twenty-three. So it talks about which departments have the most requests. And then one section is just all the other departments and then where the requests are coming from.
Where, what, what are those? Can you tell me?
So, yeah, the top three are building inspection, planning and sheriff. Sheriff is the orange.
Sheriff, that's what I wondered.
Yeah, and then that's all the requests that they receive that's through next request system. Um, they receive even additional requests in email and, um, walk-ins and everything.
Those.
So this is just the counties.
That we have record of.
Is that the only office that does it through another avenue as well?
Yeah, they're trying to make it so that it all goes into next request. We've talked to them and they would like to have it all through there. It's just they get it from so many different areas that it's hard to just make that transition all at once.
Well, you know, it, it really is just a little surprising when you look at this report, how many people, I see the sheriff, but when they're. When they're coming from not within Weber County, but they're everywhere else.
Yeah, that's the next crack.
Well, uh, how can you read that?
Yeah. Um, and so the next slide is, um.
So it. So it was probably a bad decision on my part. I. I told her just go ahead and do a summary thing because we're gonna do the full presentation in commission meeting.
Uh huh.
Um, and this was more just kind of a guideline of the general stuff that we're going to talk about. But I see now it would have been good for us to bring like the full data here and then present it again. So that's bad on me. So.
That's okay.
Um, so then the next one is talking about where they're coming from. So this one is Utah is the yellow. Um, outside of Utah, and then there were two that were from London. That's like the orange part. And then the ones that didn't put in the, a location, that's on there. And then the next slide is. Just Utah requests both inside the county and outside.
So is the Weaver County, is that the green one? Or is that blue?
It's the green.
So requests from within Weaver County is of that foreground.
And.
Yes.
All of these ones equal that yellow one. Right?
No, so this one's just outside the state. Or yeah, you're right. Sorry.
Outside the state, the yellow is.
Yellow is inside the state.
So all of that yellow is reflected here.
Yep.
And blue is outside the county?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we charge it enough for this service.
You know, it'd be, I think it would be nice to set up. Both Craig and Jay have talked about this. Might be set up a county-wide consistent. Charge. Right now, it's kind of up to the department.
No.
Oh, really?
We need to do a county-wide to make it fair.
It'd be nice to all be consistent because some, it, it depends on what is they're asking for though.
Doesn't matter.
Department has, you know, certain records, they know it costs them twenty-five bucks to process, so they have a standard fee. Some of our requests are very hard to have a standard fee on depending on what it is.
And then you can do a cost plus even too, you know, with this and, listen, we're running the business of government and this is to. No, 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 I like, let's be consistent. That's what we're supposed to do. I'd love to see that. I'd like some, some kind of a. Audit kind of a thing to make that so it's all consistent that way. I think that's just a good way to do government. Mr. Anything?
Yep, I agree.
Commissioner Frost, are you still there? He may not be.
Yeah, I'm still here. Yep, can hear you.
Any comment on there?
No, I think that makes sense. I, you know, and this has been discussed for a little while, so. I think it's a good direction to head.
Thank, thank you. Okay.
And then on the back, it talks about, it just shows how the requests have grown over the years. So in twenty nineteen, we started from that. Little tiny. Um, bar is just from August to December, and then it goes twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Then twenty twenty-three, we had over sixteen hundred, and that's just what was put into the system.
But those sixteen hundred, more than twelve hundred, came from outside the county. That's a crock of crap.
And it just keeps going on. So, yeah, absolutely. The county cannot be in the business of providing, even if we're legis, even if we're mad, if we have to do this. We can't do it at our expense. They're gonna, the person's requesting has to be able to bear the burden of the expense.
For sure.
Including the prorated portion of the officer and all the costs and even the housing of the facility.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll start, we'll start looking, looking into that, some kind of policy that makes sense. Provides flexibility where needed and structure where, yeah, where we can. I think part of that data looking at too is that the sheriff's requests are going up commensurately.
Mm-hmm.
And there seems to be a lot of people out of the county that are having those sheriff's.
Those, a, a lot of them probably the clerks for attorneys or things like that, you know? It's just the cost of doing business. I'm sorry, that's just the cost of doing business.
Theoretically, we should be funding the physician, right?
That's, well, that's what I meant by that. Yes, that these should be funding the physician. These requests. So we can almost guarantee with this chart, with somewhat accuracy, we're gonna have at least. Twelve to eighteen, two thousand requests this year. And so, there you go. That's how it works.
And there's already a code that talks about, um, the breakdown on how, like, if there's not a default fee, how the department can. Um, establish a fee for something too.
I just don't want, I don't want our property, I don't want the property taxpayers of Weber County to. Fund a legal operation outside the state of Utah or help in proportionate fund that.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, it's two yeses.
And you, and you know what? Honestly, the department's probably appreciate it too. If they've all got their own ways of calculating those fees. They'd probably appreciate some consistency, I'm thinking.
Well, honestly, I think some of what we already have in place for fees is based on their experience with what they get asked for the most. And not that they really wanted to change that at this point. We can approach them about that definitely and see what.
Somehow consolidate it.
Our cost, listen, our, our costs just have to be covered here. And I wanna include all the costs here. You know, and especially, you know, I realize there could be bad actors, but I don't really think they exist here. In the seven years I've been able to put up. My, I think everyone's genuine. I don't think anybody's trying to hide anything. I think we're all, we all have good intent and we take care of the ones that, that aren't good intent. But I don't think it's the burden of the property taxpayers to pay for this, this service. I don't think that's what property taxes are for.
And on some of these, um. Really, uh, I'll give you an example. So especially when tax sales coming around, we get folks. From all over the country that are interested. They see the late night. Um, hey, buy a tax lien, where, and they don't even use the same terms that we do here. And the response to that is, here's the link to our website. Done. So part of, of. Making this more efficient is we, we have processes in place for things where we have it available on the website. People didn't even bother looking. So the response to it. takes thirty seconds.
Yep.
And there's really nothing to charge.
And they, yeah, and they can put in their information, their credit card and everything else, and then we process it within the timeline that we're required to by state law. Done. Right?
Um, some of them, it's, it's really just as simple as answering a question, so I don't know how much we would charge.
No, no, right, but.
But, but yeah, some of them.
Public records, I don't think you can chart, like the ones that are just available on the website, I don't think.
Correct.
Charge.
Correct, but, but some of them.
You, you understand what I'm talking about.
Right, yeah, yeah, but some of them, yeah, some of them that do take a little bit of research and some compilation, that take time, those definitely are things we should be charging for.
Sorry, it seems to me like we're just doing lot of, by these numbers, we're doing a lot of work for the attorneys, like, like cross, or some kind of, some kind of attorney somewhere, somehow, so, that's easy. Those costs need to be shift, shifted.
Well, and any way to get a sense of that actually goes to the, the last couple of slides.
Yeah, so then it breaks it down just the last quarter in twenty twenty-three, and so the first chart is again showing what the top three departments were that received the most requests, and it's the same thing, planning, building inspection, and sheriff. And then the next chart is, um, showing all their requests, and the blue is on time, and then the top ones are late. And then it's the same thing, so the first one's the sheriff, building inspection, planning, just because those were the top three, and then the remaining are on the next slide, because they didn't have as many requests. Um, and then. Yeah, and this is just a snapshot on that day, some of those requests haven't, of course, been fulfilled now. But it's just, again, they're given the ten days to respond, but sheriff gets a ton of requests, but they do their best to make it.
Yeah.
But of course, you get those couple that it's, goes over those couple days.
Is there any kind of penalty that we have if we don't make that ten day deadline?
No, um, technically, um, it's considered an appeal if you go over it, unless you've notified the requister that, um, it's gonna take longer, um, but if it goes over the ten days, they have the right to appeal. And then, so it's kind of considered a denial, but most people will just wait till you respond, because they saw the record.
Great. Any questions?
No. To see all the details.
Commissioner Farrar, if you would want to comment, now would be a good time.
Well, I appreciate where you're going with this, I agree, I think I get a little concerned when we're not charging a, a fee that translates to what the, the public should pay for those fees, if we're being, you know, used, then let's, let's make sure that those fees and the information we're passing is uh, paying for our time and effort, I, I just don't think we owe it to the attorneys or whoever may be requesting these for, for the free work, so. Anyway, I, I'd hope you come up with a policy that fits state law, but also make sure that we don't subsidize this as a county.
Great, we're all on the same page there, thank you, Commissioner.
And something we could probably do, probably not for this presentation, but we're going into twenty twenty-four, is maybe get an idea of uh, the system doesn't track this, but maybe get an idea of what percentage of grammar requests take more than five minutes to fulfill.
Mm-hmm.
How many of them, when I said, how many of them actually, and then of those, how many are we actually charging for, and how many should we be charging for?
Sure. The statute, I think, is fifteen minutes.
Yeah, you can't charge for the first fifteen minutes, and then after that, it's whatever the hourly wage of the lowest paid employee.
Mm-hmm.
So we could probably do some checking to see, just do a general survey like with the sheriff, say, hey, just roughly what percentage of requests you get take more than fifteen minutes to fill.
Well, and then they also prorate though office space and things like that, that wasn't rated in the statute, but there is, just because you have the lowest paid employee, doesn't mean you have to have a they, they, you shouldn't charge for the place where they sit, and the building that they're in, and the chair they sit on, and the telephone that they use, and all the other stuff, but I mean, you know, that's, that's part of doing business, you can't do business just out there in the wild, no phone.
Yeah, we may be able to use a burden break. We'll check, we'll look into the statute and see if that provides any guidance.
Just want to be as fair as we know how to be for the, and you're good at that, you guys are great at that, so.
Yeah, Janie's been fantastic.
I had a girl, Jenny.
And the last thing is, um, I also have to give an update on the county archive, and right now we've just been working on updating um, the county archive room and the county archive website.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, is there anything else, Commissioner Bowles, you have? It's great, Commissioner Farrar, unless you have another comment?
None for me, thank you.
Great. I don't see it, appreciate your discussion there, thank you so much.
And is there anything you'd like us to add to the presentation or?
No, just keep going forward.
Okay. So expecting to have all three of these as, as action items, the first two will probably be pretty quick, and the presentation will take maybe just a few more minutes to.
Great.
Just go through the slides.
Appreciate that, thank you, appreciate what you do. Okay, with that, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion for item number eight, not listed, for a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this work session is now adjourned, thank you.